Excuse me, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Buncombe County Planning Board meeting. They're scheduled for April 4th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I guess everyone's had an opportunity to look at the agenda proposed for today. Are there any comments or adjustments to the agenda? Anyone like to make? I've got a motion to approve from Mr. Hughes.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Wood. Any further discussion? All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item of business is approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was March 7th of 2011. We didn't have a meeting on the 21st of March because we didn't have any items to present to you folks for your consideration. So, we did miss a meeting back in March. Typically, we meet twice a month. But, anyway, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes of the March 7th meeting?
Yeah, one minor correction. Bottom of page two, there's a reference to me as Chairman Hughes, and that just needs to be Mr. Hughes.
We just can't get over it, can we?
We're having it.
That's okay.
Yeah, there you go. Anything else? Any other corrections?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Hughes to approve.
Second.
Second. Mr. Hudgens. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. I'd like to recognize, this is not on the agenda, but I'd like to recognize our Assistant County Manager, John Creighton. He wants to make an introduction this morning.
Mr. Chairman, board members. I'd like to take a moment of your time to introduce Josh O'Connor. Josh has taken Jim Coleman's place as zoning administrator. Josh has been an employee with the county since August of '07. He just finished a year in Iraq and came back to us several weeks ago. So, I just wanted to take a moment of y'all's time to say that I want you all to welcome Josh. Really, he's a great employee, I'm glad to have him back, and I think he'll do a good job for us.
Welcome, Josh.
Welcome back.
Yeah, look forward to working with you.
Thank you for what you've done.
Absolutely. I've got one. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a subdivision review request from the Butler Mountain Estate subdivision. This application was received just recently and received inside of the 30-day requirement that we have in our ordinance. And the first thing we need to act on, I'll let Debbie guide us through this just a little bit, because I haven't done this before. But, the first thing we need to act on is we need to agree to provide, approve a variance of the 30-day requirement so that we can take this matter up for discussion. Debbie, would you guide us through that a little bit, please?
Yes. The ordinance has a requirement that the application be submitted for this board at least 30 days before the meeting at which it is heard, so that you would have to approve a variance in that standard of the ordinance in order to hear the, go on and hear the actual application. Additionally, it has a 30-day application for a variance, so you would need to waive that requirement as well. And in your packet, you do have, they have requested some other variances, which you wouldn't hear yet, but we do have some worksheets for variances. On the very top would be the one that is, gives some possible findings of fact if you want to move on that. All you would need to do is read the first sentence, which says, "Mr. Chairman, based upon the evidence presented to this board, including the following exhibits, the petitioner's application, the submitted development plan, findings of fact worksheet, I move that the board adopt the following findings of fact." And then, rather than reading all through that, you can say numbers 1 through 3 and 4A if your motion is to approve, and 4B if it is to not approve.
But, again, first, we've got to entertain a motion to exempt them from the variant, I mean, from the 30-day requirement, correct?
For the variance.
For the variance, okay. Does everyone understand that?
Could we hear rationale for why the variance?
We do have a worksheet for the 30-day.
No, we do not have a worksheet for the 30-day waiver. We just have a worksheet for the 30-day. The 30 days from the preliminary plan, the environment is a variance. The way it's written in the subdivision ordinance, the 30-day waiver for the variance in general is a waiver. Does that make, I know, it's really confusing.
The reason for the 30-day variance, though, is?
The reason that Butler Mountain is before the planning board today is, I think, it was 2003, and Butler Mountain applied for this section of their subdivision for preliminary approval. It was tabled due to some road design issues, and they never came back before the planning board. What they did is, there is a exemption in the state statutes regarding 10-acre lots for subdivisions. The way staff had interpreted that exemption was that any lot within a subdivision that was 10 acres was exempt. In 2008, after some discussion with the school of government, lawyers at the school of government, and then discussion with Michael, that 10-acre exemption is meant to be for an entire subdivision that's 10 acres. So, say you have 100 acres, you have 10 10-acre lots. Butler Mountain was sort of caught in the middle of it. They tried to record a lot. They have a lot that they're closing on relatively soon, and they tried to record that 10-acre lot. Well, now, they're subject to the major subdivision ordinance standards. So, they are requesting that, in order to get that lot recorded, they are requesting some additional variances in order to just develop, I think it's 10 more lots, 10 10-acre, 10 10-acre lots, as they have been in the past, given that they got caught in the middle of this reinterpretation of that exemption.
In the sense of urgency is that they've got a contract or potential closing?
They have a potential closing. The way this came about is they actually bought, brought in that final plat with the 10-acre lot for recordation, and we couldn't sign off on it.
Okay.
So, the, just to clarify, you said 10 lots, and I noticed the plat says 18, so the lots ending in 7, 4, 6 triple 5, I'm counting 10 if I'm reading that correctly.
If you look on the subdivision plans that Bob did, there's plat books and pages for the lots that are currently recorded, that were recorded under that old interpretation. And then, there's 10 additional lots that they want to develop as 10 10-acre lots.
And those would be the ones with the pin numbers ending in 7, 4, 6 triple 5. Is that right?
Debbie just told me it's nine 10-acre lots, actually.
It's nine lots greater than 10 acres, and then one lot that is a little over 4 acres. That is to be open space for the subdivision.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the waiver of the 30-day variance? Application requirement is set forth in ordinance 70-10.
I'll take a stab at it. "Mr. Chair, based on the evidence presented to this board, including the exhibits and the petitioner's application, I move that the board adopt the finding of fact that," would it be items 1 through 3?
Yes.
Items 1 through 3, and that the application does meet the requirements for granting of the variance by demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the fact that it's a reinterpretation from the 2008 ordinance, and that I would make the motion that we grant that variance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hughes and a second by Mr. Hudgens. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. Now, guess we could move forward with Mr. Grasso's presentation. You would come forward on behalf of the applicant and introduce yourself, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Grasso, representing the applicant. Jillian, do you want to go through the plan, or do you want me to?
If, just for the planning board's information, if you look on the recommended staff contingencies, there's a list of what variances they are requesting.
I've requested three additional variances. The first one is section 7040A5, which is waiving the slope analysis map requirements. And in the packet, this has been an ongoing development for a number of years. 1970, okay. And, let's see here, let me get the right, the, and the slope analysis hasn't been done on the land, and it just would have required more time to have done that. The lot development, individual lots, will be regulated by the high elevation, steep slopes, and ridge protection requirements. So, and because these lots are 10-acre lots, it really, that's why we're asking for this variance from the requirements. The second variance is section 7067. And this is waiving the road design standards. The roads have been built. They have been reviewed and approved by the fire marshal. There are some places where the roads exceed 18% in short sections. Again, though, because the fire marshal has approved the roads, has reviewed and approved them, we're asking for the variance since the roads have been in and they have been paved. The third variance is waiving the hillside development requirements. And, again, on this, the lot development will be, individual lots will be regulated by the high elevation, steep slopes, and ridge protection requirements, and they're 10-acre lots. So, again, we're requesting the variance from the requirements of submittal. Open to questions as far as the preliminary plat?
Bob, how long ago were the roads put in?
The roads in this section were a little over 10.
Yeah, Kearney, please identify yourself, just for the record.
My name is Kearney McNeil, and I'm a part of the family. I'm the ne'er-do-well son-in-law of the developer here. So, I'm representing the Brown family who did the development. And I initially misspoke. It wasn't '70, it was '79 when the development was first begun. And the roads in this section were put in, I think, on the order of 10 years ago, based on my recollection.
And they've been paved with a patumin surface treatment. Everything's in.
Yeah. Okay, so this, really, this subdivision's been long ago developed, quite frankly, and then we adopted a new ordinance back in October, the commissioners did, and it's not compliant as a result of the adoption of our new regulations in early October. That's what this is about, isn't it?
Right.
And you've got a sale pending.
Actually, the, this section of road never went through the major subdivision requirements and plans of middle because they were developing in acre, in lots greater than 10 acres.
Gotcha.
But, the roads were put in back in '03 when they first made a submittal for this section. At that point, the roads were in and stoned. They just hadn't been paved yet.
But, based on the way the ordinance was at that point, our interpretation was that 10-acre lots were excluded anyway. Is that not correct?
At that point, the interpretation was that any lot greater than 10 acres was exempt from the subdivision ordinance.
They acted in good faith. There's nothing here in other words.
If I remember, there was no requirement to pave even.
There was, there were no road developments.
So, they've gone over beyond the standards that were required.
No road development standard at all.
Right.
Given that all of those lots would be exempt.
Have both of you had an opportunity to look at the proposed contingencies that the staff has requested, and you have a problem with those?
No, I was just going to say that we'll resubmit the plans with this information that's needed on the drawings.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Couple of questions, please. Can you explain once again why you want to waiver on the slope analysis?
They are 10-acre lots, and the amount, what we're trying to do is, we were trying to get this in for this meeting, and the topo that we received, the survey information, it would have taken a number of hours to get it so that we could do that slope analysis. And so, we requested that due to time, and because these are 10-acre lots, and because the lots will be subjected to all of the steep slope, high elevation, and ridge protection standards, that it made the slope analysis kind of a moot point, and just an extra effort, extra cost to the developer. So, that's why we came in with that variance request.
I need for the staff to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if I'm reading the topo elevations correctly, this would not qualify for the steep slope and ridge top because it's under 2,500 feet. Is that not correct?
The elevation is higher than that. Did you start at 1,000, Bob?
This is what the surveyor gave me. This is all part of the problem with the information that was given to us. And so, rather than, yeah, it's all over 2,500 feet.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Yes. So, it is in the high elevation.
I kept looking at Butler Mountain. I was taking it up there.
Right. And that was one of the problems with the information that was given to us. They had assumed elevations, then every contour line had a elevation value of zero. All of that would have had to been redone. I mean, there was just, it was like, there was so much stuff that had to be done, it just, it didn't make sense because we're doing 10-acre lots, and because of the reinterpretation of the 10-acre lot review.
So, that common area is that cleared area on the very top of Butler Mountain?
That's correct.
Yeah, I've been there.
It's a really nice development.
Oh, yeah. Let's see if I had anything else. Do you happen to know what the average slope of this whole thing is?
I couldn't, I couldn't get there. It was, I tried, and it was kicking me out, and I was getting some really weird, I was getting like 20% or something, and I said, "That's just not correct." And so, I just kind of threw up my hands and said, "There's something inherently wrong with this, but let's just stop and ask for the variance." It's just, it's one of those quirky things, what, when you get information from the surveyor, sometimes cooperates digitally, sometimes it doesn't.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments, questions? Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove? Excuse me. We have to each one of them vote on each, independent of one another? Okay. Okay.
What was that?
We've got the. We've got to vote on each variance, independent of one another. We've got three of them. Well, I'll try. Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
"Based on the evidence presented to this board, including the following exhibits, petitioner's application to submitted development plan, the findings of fact and worksheet, I move that this board adopt the following findings of fact, items 1 through 3. This application does meet the requirements for granting a variance under demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the following reasons, A through C. I move to approve."
Second.
Yeah. Variants. You've got a. Oh, excuse me, sorry. Variants from Buncombe County Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance.
70-40A5.
Yeah, that would be the first one. Yeah. Okay, we got that? Okay. We've got a motion. How about a second?
Second.
We've got a second from Mr. Hughes. Any further discussion? Yeah, we do. I'm sorry. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to comment regarding this application for the variance? I see none, okay. Public comment was therefore closed. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we need a motion for the second variance that was requested, which is 70-67. Would you like to tackle that one too, Mr. Hudgens?
No. I'm worn out, I'm trying to rest.
"Mr. Chair, based on the evidence presented to the board, including the following exhibits, petitioner's application submitted development plan and findings of fact worksheet, I move that the board adopt the following findings of facts, item 1 through 3, and 4A, that the application does, in fact, meet the requirements of granting a variance by demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the reasons presented, and would move that we approve the variance from section 70-67 with regard to road design standards within the subdivision ordinance."
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Wood.
And we do have a letter from the fire marshal, right?
Okay, anyone from the public that would like to address this matter? Having heard none, we'll close the public hearing portion of this process. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. All right, we have one more, and that would be a variance from Article 70-68. We need a motion for that.
"Mr. Chair, based on the evidence presented to this board, including the following exhibits, the petitioner's application, the submitted development plan, the findings of fact worksheet, I move that this board adopt the following findings of fact, reference items 1, 2, and 3, and further, that this application does meet the requirements for granting a variance by demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the following reasons, as stated in paragraphs A, B, and C, and specifically, make a motion for the variance from 70-68 to waive the hillside development standards within the subdivision ordinance."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Second. We have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Hudgens. Public comment, any? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the process. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Grasso.
Do we need a motion?
Then you would need to approve the plans also.
But, not necessarily in the same form. They don't have to be in the same form.
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve the plans submitted by the applicant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda, let's see if we can do this again, is a request from Kestwick Hills Subdivision, first for a waiver of the 30-day variance application requirement that's set forth in Article 70-10, similar to what we just went through for Butler Mountain Estates. The applicant, again, has requested the waiver of the 30-day requirement in the ordinance, and that's the first thing we need to address. Does anyone have any comments, any questions of staff?
Well, you had heard a little bit about this subdivision previously. They did start subdividing in the early '90s. They submitted an erosion control plan prior to the passing and adoption of the subdivision ordinance. They subsequently had changed their plan and added some additional acreage to the planned subdivision, and so, we are reviewing their first planned submittal for a major subdivision. It is, I believe, there's 19 subdivision lots that have already been cut out of the mother tract, and they do have several roads already in place and paved. They are asking for, again, several variances because this subdivision has been ongoing for some time.
Okay, and it's my understanding, this one too, has a sale pending, and that's the reason that there's a certain sense of urgency to move forward with this today.
Do you have a list of the variances like you did for the Butler Mountain?
Yes, if you'll look at your sheet with the staff contingencies, at the very top, there is a request for a variance on the 30-day submittal, a request from 70-67 road design standards, and that is for the roads that are. seventy dash sixty-seven road design standards, and that is for the roads that are currently in and paved, and then a variance from seventy sixty-seven three A for, uh, future road design standard.
I don't see that list.
Have that in your packet.
I found it.
He found it midway through the packet.
Yes, midway through.
The last page of the packet.
I got it.
And then the third variance is to allow the road corridor width to be greater than a hundred and thirty-five feet for an area that's shown on the, the plan, and that is for a future road development.
Okay, first order of business though is to, um, hear the mo, hear applicant's request to waive the thirty-day, uh, application requirement as set forth in Article seventy dash ten, so we need to, uh, have a motion regarding that up or down first. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Based on the evidence presented to this board, including the following exhibits, petitioner's, petitioner's application, the submitted development plan, the findings of fact worksheet, I move that this board adopt the following findings of fact, items one through three, which is the variance from seventy dash thirty-nine. This application does meet the requirements for granting a variance by demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the following reasons, items A, B, and C. A move for approval.
Second.
May I have a motion? I have a second by Mr. Sackler. Any discussion? Okay, having heard none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, good. Uh, now I think we're prepared to hear from Mr. Grasso again.
Good morning again. Okay, I, uh, I'm representing John Chuting of Keswick Development, um, and we are submitting a preliminary plat for roughly half the, the property. Um, it is the land that lies under twenty-five hundred feet in elevation and, um, pretty much, um, follows the, uh, line between the zoning classification of R three and R L D. There are some pages that have the grading and the vertical road design and, for the proposed roads. The existing roads are already in and paved. Um, there are places that, because they were built quite a while ago, um, they do not meet, um, the present road standards, and so we're requesting a variance for that. The roads have been reviewed and approved by the Fire Marshal, um, so we're requesting that variance. The, the, the existing roads are the ones that are shaded in on the, on the preliminary plat. Then there's the future, the, the, the roads that are proposed, they've been, uh, rough graded already in, and, um, uh, there might be some places where they need to be widened just a little bit. Uh, for instance, on Vanderbeek Drive, there are some places where the, the road centerline radius is less than ninety feet, and so I've indicated on the drawings how they need to be widened accordingly in the curves, and that work will need to be done. We're requesting, if you look at the grading plan, which is sheet four, we're, we're requesting a variance for the grading corridor because the width, um, exceeds a hundred and thirty-five feet for the disturbance in that one little stretch. Um, this is according to the LiDAR topo that we used when we did the vertical road alignment and, and the computer did the cross-sections and, and the grading. Um, we'll go out and verify that because that road's been built, and so we need to just, uh, verify the, um, the disturbance, but to err on the conservative side, um, I went ahead and requested this variance because, uh, according to the, um, computer calculations, we exceeded the hundred and thirty-five feet of corridor disturbance. It's, it's a length of road of a hundred and fifty feet and, um, the width is roughly a hundred and fifty-five feet of corridor, so we're exceeding it by twenty feet.
That's an existing, that, that disturbance has already taken place.
Yes, it's already taken place.
Right.
So, um, but in case anything needed to be widened to meet current standards, I just erred on the conservative side, get the variance in place so that there wouldn't be any, uh, future issues with, with that.
What's the status of that disturbance? Has it been re...
Oh, it's all been seeded and, yeah. Yes, yeah, it's, it's, it's all in, it's stable. There are no erosion control, um, issues, uh, with the project. Storm drainage, uh, pipes are in, um, and that's indicated on, uh, sheet four. The, uh, surveyor who, um, um, was working with Mr. Chuting since ninety-two, is it? Ninety-two High Country Sur, or ninety, uh, High Country Surveying, they, they're the ones who sized the pipes. Um, all I did was just incorporate all that on the plans. Let's see. Get all my various sheets here. Okay, so we're going over the seventy sixty-seven three A. Apologize, I have to go through all these, uh, forms here. Seventy sixty-seven, which is the variance to waive the, the road standards, that's for the existing roads that are in, they're paved, and there are some places that, um, the centerline, uh, uh, radius is less than ninety feet. Um, I don't think there are any, uh, road grade issues. Uh, there might be some not having, um, checked it precisely, there might be some vertical curve, um, issues, but, uh, other than that, um, it's in, it's been approved by the Fire Marshal, so, uh, from that standpoint, um, we're not, um, jeopardizing the health, safety of the public.
We have a letter from the Fire Marshal.
No, but I spoke to Mac about the existing roads.
Say that again.
I spoke to Mac about the existing roads within that subdivision.
Uh-huh.
And he's okay with the existing roads. He still needs to review the, um, proposed roads, but I don't see anything that would cause him any heartache about them.
Well, the proposed roads meet the standards, so that's, that's not an issue.
There, there are thirty-four contingencies here. I didn't read them all, but is that one of them?
The Fire Marshal approval of the, the proposed roads, yes.
Okay.
Item two.
Number two. Number two, right there. Okay, good. Uh, question please on the, um, variance for the width of the corridor. Uh, would we not also need to re, request a variance for the height? As I, as I read the ordinance, we have a sixty-foot height limit, and if I'm calculating the topo lines here, you're, you're exceeding that as well.
Correct. It's the height and width of the corridor.
Yep. So I would suggest we include both height and...
Bob, when was that cut, put in?
Pardon me?
How long ago was that cut made?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Ninety, ninety-seven, I think.
Yeah. It's mostly fill slope, yeah.
Okay, any...
What do you think the fill slope, um, Bob, will be in the end on that, or is it already there? I guess the...
Two, it's two to one. I had, uh, um, for that, that short little section, I have a one and a half to one cut slope.
Yep.
And a two to one fill slope.
That's what I figured.
I don't want to go any steeper than that.
All very stable, rubble from the Fairview Reservoir site, very stable type of...
Mr. Chuting, excuse me. If you'd like to speak, please come up because we, we're being videoed and we'd like to have your comments on video too, please. Thank you, sir.
Fill slope there, that's a rubble from the, uh...
Mr. Chuting, you need to speak into the microphone.
That's a rubble from the, uh, Fairview Reservoir site. I've monitored it and watched it, and there's been no settling whatsoever. It's properly drained so that, uh, it can't load up with water and whatnot, and I keep, you know, so it's, it's really stable.
Good. Sounds like it stood the test of time already.
Yeah.
I, I drove the roads with, uh, Mr. Chuting. I didn't see any signs of, um, any, um, you know, slow failures or anything on the side.
How long did you say that proposed road has been in? Or the, that...
Road, the, the road to the Fairview Reservoir, uh, was, was cut in ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Yeah.
On that fill, uh, at the toe, is erosion control going to require you to have a buffer or anything down there? Sometimes they do that.
You know, this, this is...
When you're right at the limit, when, when you're right at the two to one and...
Are, are we at, we're at two to one.
Yeah.
So, um, I think the ordinance allows one and a half to one fill slope set, correct, Julian? And...
You, you can go to two to one, right? On a fill slope, yeah.
Easy on two to one.
Yeah, sometimes the, when you're at two to one, they'll require a, a buffer below it, right around it. I don't know whether...
Just to note, Doug Sharp, a few months ago, did go out and look at the site and make sure everything was okay. It's a pretty old erosion control plan, but he said that the site was fine.
Okay, great.
What's, what's your intention with the property that adjoins that cut off? Is that, is that actually a lot, or what's the, what's the plan for it? It's not labeled as such.
It's going to be lots. Right now, um, I was working with the, the, the plan that was in place, and, um, those two lots, they have good house sites, but they don't meet, um, the, uh, acreage required because of the average slope, so we just left that off for right now. Um...
Any further questions of Mr. Grasso and applicant?
I was going through all of the, um, and I apologize for all these, uh, contingencies. Um, I'll do a better job next time. Um, some of these, um, like, uh, the DOT driveway permit, John, we'll just need to get some of that stuff in, but, uh, there's no problem. We'll, we'll go ahead and, um, we'll meet all the...
You'll comply with all...
Yeah, we'll comply with everything.
Just to note about the contingencies, there were no design issues. Um, there was one lot that needs to be a tiny bit bigger, um, but everything is just pretty much housekeeping notes that need to go on the plan.
Okay. Okey-dokey. All right, we've got, um, a quest, a request for two different variances that we need to address. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll start off. Thank you. Based on the evidence presented to this board, including the following exhibits, the petitioner's application, the submitted development plan, the findings of fact worksheet, I move this board adopt the following findings of fact, items one through three, which would be the variance of the seventy sixty-seven, seventy dash sixty-seven road and design standards. Also, four A, this application does meet the applica, requirements for granting a variance by demonstrating an unnecessary hardship on the owner for the following reasons, items A, B, and C. I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hudgens and a second by Mr. Hughes. Uh, do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this application for variance? I don't see any, so we will close that portion of this process, public hearing process. Uh, any further questions before we move the question? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have one more variance that we need to, uh, move on.
Mr. Chairman, based on the evidence presented, the board, including the exhibits, including the petitioner's application, submitted development plan, and the findings of fact, I move that the board adopt the findings of fact, items one through three and four A, that this application does in fact meet the requirements of granting a variance by demonstrating unnecessary hardship on the owner, uh, with regard to variance from seventy dash sixty-seven three A, in order to allow corridor width greater than a hundred and thirty-five feet and height greater than sixty...
What is it?
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet.
Uh, for the area shown on the submitted site plans.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hughes. Second by Mr. Hudgens. Um, any comment from the public regarding this, uh, motion to vary? I see none, so we'll again close that portion of this process. Um, okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We need to approve the plan though.
Mr. Chair. I'm glad you're sitting over there.
I'm glad you're sitting beside me today.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation, I make a recommendation to the board that we approve the plan as presented, subject to the contingencies offered by staff, uh, for approval.
Second. Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, too. Okay.
Bob, would you like these plans back? Would you like some of these back?
Okay.
Just go on the cycle.
Do you need them?
Oh, give me all of them.
Nice slope, man.
Yeah.
Yeah. First one we've seen.
That's the first one?
That's the very first one.
Yeah.
You don't have colorblind, so...
You would have a hard time with that.
Well, it's a pretty basic one, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next, uh, item on our agenda is entitled Discussion of Zoning Maps. Uh, now, I don't know anything about this much, but I looked into it a little bit. This will not, this doesn't require any action today, does it?
That's correct.
And the reason I said that, I do business with Ingles Markets, and I would, if I did, I needed to recu, recuse myself.
What we're asking is because the zoning ordinance, uh, specifies that an initial zoning, uh, request can come from the Board of Commissioners or the planning board or the, the owners. We're asking that, that the planning board initiate the process of zoning, uh, portions of these two lots. What happened was when we did our initial countywide zoning, the, the tax maps indicated that the... What happened was when we did our initial countywide zoning, the tax maps indicated that the lots were in the town of Black Mountain. But in fact, only a portion of them are in Black Mountain. And you can see from those maps that we've included the portions that are west of North Fork Road. Of those two parcels are in fact in the county, but without zoning right now.
Okay.
So what we're recommending is that we go through that process of initial zoning with the Ingalls portion being EMP and the state's parcel being public service.
Got you.
And these are in the MSD Service District.
Correct.
And that that shaded pink is owned by the state of North Carolina, isn't that correct?
Um.
Yes.
Are you looking at the?
No, I'm looking.
This map?
Look at the first one.
Yes. The pink is owned by the state.
Okay.
Looked at the first page.
Okay.
Got a little flag there for each of them.
I got you. Okay. So these two properties just fell through the hole, so to speak. It never got classified.
Exactly.
Because we thought it was part of the town of Black Mountain and you just need permission to go forward or our concurrence to go forward with the process.
Yes.
Okay.
In the form of a motion?
I think it should be a motion.
Make a motion that these technical corrections to the zoning ordinance be made in accordance with the information presented by staff.
I second.
All right, Ms. Wood is second. And I'll recuse myself from the vote, although it should.
We've got to wait for.
Oh, did Greg leave? I didn't even notice.
He just had to step out for a second.
Okay.
The chair had to recuse himself, so we need you as.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, let's restate the motion, please.
Restate the motion that we make the technical corrections proposed by staff with regard to these two properties that were left out of the original zoning ordinance.
I second it.
Yeah. And I'm recusing myself. So any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Signify by.
Public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Public comment? Okay, we have no public comment. Okay. All right, so moving forward. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please reflect that I abstain from voting. The next item on our agenda is further discussion of the proposed retaining wall language. And I trust that everyone's received this and had a chance to review. And I'll just get it started. I looked at it last night in fairly great detail. And I mean, kind of, we're addressing two things here, it looks like. One is safety and health, of course. That has to do with the monitoring of the movement of the wall and the terracing and things like that, you know, requirements. And then we're also addressing the aesthetics of the wall. We've got two things on the table, it appears to me. And I would request that as we go through this thing for the next few minutes, let's try to address the safety issues first and see if we can kind of get on the same page there. Then we'll drop back and talk about the aesthetic language that has been injected into this proposed language. We have with us today, and I'd like for him to have an opportunity to speak as well, a gentleman, a friend of Josh Holmes. Josh couldn't be here and this is one of the subjects that he really wanted to be able to address today as well. He's emailed me a few comments I'll look at in a minute and we'll probably go over that as well. But I'd like Jesse to have an opportunity to speak in just a minute too. Have you had a chance to see this language at all?
I have.
Okay. Well, we'll get to you in just a second. Let me kind of get started. First paragraph, first page. Just a correction. Gabions, the term gabion wall is spelled G-A-B-I-O-N-S.
And what is a gabion wall?
It is a rock wall and the rock is contained, it's a gravity wall. It's a rock wall and the rock size is typically four to six inches in diameter, four to eight. Rod's familiar with this. And it's contained by wire baskets. Galvanized wire baskets is what it is. Back in the eighties, that was the preferred wall, quite frankly, for a stretch of maybe a decade in there. You don't see them as much anymore. They do, they have an application in particularly near streams, stream banks, when you're close to a stream and this type of thing where you may have flooding.
Now, when you say wire, this is real heavy duty.
Oh, yeah.
Gauge stuff.
Yes.
They did that up on Town Mountain Road.
Yep.
On Mount Olive Drive.
That's exactly what it is.
State did it there. Couple of years ago.
I've seen that.
There's one out here behind Ingalls on Tunnel Route.
Also one by Sam's.
That was up in the air.
It's a huge one and behind Sam's Club there.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's one on Lake South Street.
Yes, there is. There is, yeah. But that is, all four of those are gabion walls. Paragraph number one says that this ordinance that we're creating will apply to walls twenty feet and greater in height.
That was changed from fifteen that we initially.
Yeah, and I read that last night and I got thinking, and I was the one, I think, that came up with that. I know I talked about, I think our prior language, for instance, had something in there about terracing would be required if it was fifteen feet high or greater. And that did get changed to twenty as well, as I remember. We'd start terracing requirements at twenty feet. And I'm just throwing this out for comment. I'm not so sure that the requirement for wall reviews, certifications, everything shouldn't start at fifteen. No, it's two different things, is what I'm saying. This ordinance would kick in, and I'm throwing this out for discussions, just me thinking. This ordinance would kick in with walls fifteen feet and greater in height, but the terracing would not kick in until you had a wall twenty feet or greater in height. You see what I'm saying? Unless somebody has an issue with that.
So the landscaping would start at fifteen and terracing would start at twenty?
No. No, I'm thinking the lands, not necessarily. I mean, we could craft it any way we want to, I guess.
I wasn't here at the last meeting. Can you explain why we went from fifteen to twenty to start with?
Yeah, we talked about, Bernie was here, of course. Bernie's Geotech has that background and I've got some wall background as well. And we talked about, we thought that the fifteen foot was too restrictive. And we provided several examples around the county where walls greater than fifteen and twenty and greater than forty, a few of those have been successfully constructed and this type of thing. And we felt like that to begin terracing at fifteen feet was a little too restrictive. But that was talked about in quite some detail.
And it also, I remember the discussion, we talked about more land disturbance because of the loss of that. You'd have to terrace more.
That's right, Michelle.
So you, there was a lot more land disturbance that would occur in some situations and examples that were brought up due to that five-foot difference?
Yeah, every time you terrace, you know, you step in.
Ten feet.
Yeah, ten feet. Proposed ten feet, you know, and so forth. That, you're exactly right. Yeah.
So as it's written now, if you had a wall system, and the first wall had to be twenty feet, and you go in ten and then fifteen up, in ten, fifteen up, if you had to have multiple terraces, is that the way it would work?
That's correct.
And now you're having some second thoughts that maybe you should come down to fifteen feet for the first wall.
No. No, I still think that implementing, activating the terracing requirement.
Should start at twenty.
Should be at twenty. I'm just saying.
So that would activate the fencing requirement and the engineer's certification at fifteen.
Correct.
But you'd activate terracing and landscaping at twenty.
Right, right. Back on the safety and health, I think that the fifteen is more restrictive. And I mean, that's probably the trump card in this thing, is safety and health. And personally, I feel like we might ought to move that to fifteen feet. But just like you stated, it starts the terracing requirement at twenty, which is what we discussed at our last meeting, that you weren't here, but that's what we arrived at. I say arrived at, that's what we suggested. We're still trying to craft this thing. Kind of a, I don't guess this is a typo. Second paragraph, let me make sure I understand it right, where it says amendment to section seventy-eight dash five eighty-one definitions. Structure means that on the second sentence, where it transitions from blue to red, second sentence starting with and retaining wall system shall be considered structures. You did strike A, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't tell, okay.
And the dimensional requirements would be setbacks and height limits of the zoning district that they were in.
And when you say retaining walls and retaining wall systems, the retaining walls means a wall?
A retaining wall or the system is if they're terraced and you've got a multiple.
Multiple walls.
You consider the cumulative height of them.
From what I understand, Joe, even if you terrace, it is considered one wall. It's one structural unit, even though it's terraced.
So is the wall system the term?
Yes. That's correct. That's correct.
The lower wall is supporting the upper wall.
Walls.
Type thing. Yeah, right. On page two, if you flip over, first paragraph, first sentence entitled Terracing. It currently reads the terracing of retaining walls is required and at no point shall any single retaining wall exceed twenty feet in height. Should that not read?
Fifteen?
Twenty, I'm sorry. It says twenty, I'm sorry. Fifteen on my mind. Should that not read the terracing of retaining walls is required if any single retaining wall exceeds twenty feet in height? I'm wordsmithing here a little bit. I got lost in the interpretation of at no point shall.
In the blue part, it says the lowest level may be no more than twenty feet tall and successive levels may not exceed fifteen feet in height.
Give it time, say if it's a eighteen-foot wall.
That's a little confusing.
It is, that's why I thought. Yeah, it just seemed, again, let me run it by you one more time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What I'm proposing is the terracing of retaining walls is required if any single retaining wall exceeds twenty feet in height. Is that, is that logical? The language it was in there in the middle of the sentence confused me. I've got some other comments, but staying on the focus on safety and health. Flip over to, I guess it would be page four. Anyway, it's called safety fencing required. Is that paragraph? And I would suggest, we've been talking about fencing, I would suggest we add guardrail in there. Now, I have seen, I can give you an example of this, where there's guardrail without fencing and vice versa, I think. But where it reads currently, the installation of fencing shall be required at the top level of the retaining wall, et cetera. Should we consider putting in there the installation of fencing or guardrail shall be required at the top level of the retaining wall?
We'd need guardrail unless you had parking lot or some vehicles up there.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you, an example is the Ingalls on Long Shells Road. In the back, that wall's fifty to sixty feet high. And I can't recall, there may be fence back there too, but there is guardrail back there because there is tractor-trailer traffic goes around the back. At the home, was it the homes, is it Homestead Suites?
Homewood Suites.
Homewood Suites. Homewood Suites on Tunnel Road at the intersection of Chuns Cove Road. That wall, I think, at its greatest height's thirty-five feet. And I can't recall whether there's fencing, but I'm certain there's guardrail. Again, you've got a parking lot right there. And I'm just suggesting we might want to put guardrail in there too as well. Because you'd certainly want somebody to have a guardrail on a wall that high if you've got parking adjacent to it, not just a fence.
And the guardrail if there's parking?
Um, yeah.
Or vehicular traffic.
Has anybody else, do you have any comments related to safety and health?
This, going back to what you were talking about, I mean, the middle of that first sentence terracing, it sounds like that there can't be any walls taller than twenty feet.
Well, that's the case though, isn't it?
Well, I don't think we ought to be that restrictive unless we make it some special application.
Well, the way it read, I think it could be read that way. I think if you change it, you're talking about the thing I suggested changing, striking. I think if you change it by striking those words and adding the word if, it clarifies that, that terracing is required if the wall height's greater than twenty feet.
So no wall is higher than twenty, but a wall system can be.
No, I think, I don't think we ought to limit a single wall to twenty feet.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Well, that's what it does.
I know.
The way it's worded, it does.
Now it does.
Yeah.
And the previous version limited it to fifteen feet.
Right. Right. Well, again, that's why I went back and said, well, I think we ought to strike and at no point shall and add the word if because the way it was worded, I think it could be construed to restrict all walls to twenty feet or less than height. And that isn't what we're trying to do.
Well, I'm no engineer like you guys are, but what would be a maximum height for a wall?
Well, I think it depends on a lot of the parameters and the investigation that you have, the soil and the conditions and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
I'll touch on some of that. I don't know if this is a good.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let's go ahead. If, I'd like to recognize Jesse. Would you come up and introduce yourself while we're on this safety and health piece regarding the language? Introduce yourself, tell us what you do and.
Good morning. My name's Jesse Jacobson. I'm currently branch manager of BLE. They're a geotechnical and construction materials testing agency here in town.
And that's B, B as in boy?
BLE. And Josh had asked me to come up here and provide some information. I wasn't very clear of the format, but I thought I do have just some information, as background information. Understanding that I wasn't clear as to what the board's background was, so some of this may be information that a lot of you already know. But I'll just pass this around. This is information for your consideration when you're developing an ordinance, so I guess I'll.
Yeah, please do. I mean, there's several of us on here or in the wall. Yeah, please do. I mean, there's several of us on here are in the wall business.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And if you could leave two with the staff or two of our members who aren't here.
Okay. You know, we don't have to go through these at length, but I thought, you know, I went through and read the ordinance and, and again, we don't have to take a lot of time, but I think, I think Tom, a lot of what he was saying early on, it cuts right to the point of the focus, you know, if it's the county's desire to implement some regulations on retaining walls, I do believe that the focus should be on life safety primarily. And if you look kind of on this first slide, there, walls, failing walls are big problems. They're not only problems from a cost perspective in terms of the cost to repair those systems, but the indirect cost from when facilities go down, be it parking lots, buildings and things of that type. But absolutely, the critical, in my mind, from an engineering perspective, the critical thing to, in terms of regulation, is to think of it in terms of life safety. And there needs to be a system in place to ensure that, that that above all things is what's considered most important. Again, we don't have to go through this in detail, but there's, there's essentially two different types of retaining walls. You've got retaining walls that are built in fill applications, and typically those are bottom-up type walls. And then you have cut applications where it may be a top-down, so you're in the cut side of the mountain. So like a typical slope application, you've got a natural cross slope. This is going to be a different type of structure than the downhill structure. So you have a fill application and a cut application. And a lot of times, those are two totally different types of walls. There's different applications for different wall systems. And again, I just put a lot of this information out there, it may be a lot, but it's things to think about when you're formulating these ordinances. I just wanted to, you know, generally, most of these are for grade separations. They, in some cases, they do support structures. Walls are typically, they're, they're two, they're two different types, so you know, they, as you excavate down, you can install piles and excavate down, whether it be soil nails or pile and panels, so you'd be on the cut side. And the ones I think that most people are probably thinking of and hear are more like the MSE and ready rock walls, these fill application walls.
Jesse, the landslide on the Parkway up near Craggy Garden, are you familiar with that one?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of wall is that? On the fill, it's on the fill side?
Oh, oh, you mean, that, that was the, it went back in as a MSE wall. You're talking about up by?
Just before you get to the parking lot at Craggy Gardens, visitor center.
Oh, I'm not sure, the visitor center, I'm not sure what that was.
Big slide there a couple of years ago.
I was thinking there was a natural slide that was just before that at the picnic ground, but I'm not sure what that was.
This is on the downhill side, ju- just before you get to the visitor center. And the Parkway was closed for over a year while they put that system in.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Thanks.
And, you know, there's, there's a couple of different types of grant. You've got the cast-in-place concrete gravity walls. That's the, what's the original, what everybody used. It was formed in place. You started at level ground, you built the wall and then you backfilled behind it. Then you've got modular block walls. Those are like your ready, ready rock. Southern concrete makes these, you know, they're forty-eight inch by thirty-six inch deep, and you can actually just stack these up. They're very limited in what they can do. They can only go about eight feet tall. And they're typically not tiered systems. And the one, I guess the one down in Fairview, which has got a lot of people talking, that's an MSE wall. It's a mechanically stabilized earth wall, and that's a bottom-up type system where you've got a keystone block and you've got grid that extends some distance back into the retained soil. And so that's a bottom-up type system, and it's constructed in layers and lift till you get up to grade. And those are bottom-up type systems, so you start at grade, at the grade, and you build up. And then the.
How long has that technology been around for?
MSE walls, you see a lot of them now. They've probably been around for, in fifteen years in terms of widespread use. And I think a lot of people in here, that's the wall that they're thinking of when they're thinking of these ordinances, is these MSE walls, because that by and large is the, what you see most, most constructed in this economy and in this market right now.
Least costly?
Is an MSE wall, mechanically stabilized.
It's the least costly to do?
It is typically the least costly, that or like a reinforced soil slope, depending on the application. If you need, if you need the vertical, an MSE wall has a steeper face. It only has like a one and eight batter or something like that. So if you really have to have the space, the top ten or fifteen feet above it, you'll go with a MSE wall. Like a reinforced soil slope is just that, it's a slope, and so it's laid back. More like three-quarter or one-to-one type of a face. And so I think probably most people have these MSE wall in mind when they're, when they're thinking about these ordinances. And then there's, the one thing I do want to mention that you may want to consider in your ordinances is there are, in almost all these wall types, there are design standards that are in place currently. So you make, one idea may be that you want to reference these existing references. There's references, design standards, and for example, with the MSE walls, there are two reference documents, and I can provide those, both Federal Highway and National Concrete Masonry. So there are two design formats that are out there that you, you could potentially reference for design guidelines. And we don't, I don't want me to go into all this, but the other type is a tieback, so it's a top-down wall system. So.
Jesse, the examples that you've given us there that are failures, quantify what caused those failures? Is it installation? Is it poor oversight at the time of construction management? What's, by and large, what are the majority of the issues that, that cause those types of failures?
There's a host, usually when there is a, when there is a failure, there are several links in the chain. There's several errors in, in, in the process. Typically though, I will say that water is usually involved. Either, either subsurface, like groundwater issues, or potentially surface drainage that is diverted to the walls. By and large, water is usually in the picture. I would, I would say that probably more times than not, it, it has to do with the disconnect between the designer, the design intent and the construction. And I was gonna touch on that.
I mean, we can design the best standard for retaining wall we want to, but if it doesn't go hand in glove with the rest of the design plan for that site, these, this standard's not gonna help.
Well, that's just, yeah, that's right. That's the first phase. And the, and the thing with earthwork is you're always gonna have some surprises. You're always going to have modifications at the time of construction. And so it's critical that you have somebody out there. And the example that I bring up is a program like the statement, like the special inspections, like the courthouse is undergoing right now, where there's a designer, but then there is a QA QC firm that is responsible for third-party oversight. Usually they're the owner's representative, and they, they are brought on, can be by the architect, can be by the owner, to ensure that what is designed is implemented. And that's, that essentially, the, the special inspections process, the entire intent is to put design decisions back in the designer's hands instead of making field calls on design issues. And so one potential thought would be to implement a similar program in your ordinance. You could do like a, something that's kind of modeled after special inspections. And other counties do that. They have those in place. I know Mecklenburg County, I, I know that because I've done some work over there. They actually do have a similar program in place so that you, it's, they call it a wall certification. And people get jumpy when you use the word certification, but there is a, you know, a program where there is someone responsible for ensuring that, that it's compliant with the design documents. A lot of times, it can't be the designer. For one reason or another, they may be a designer in Charlotte, and they obviously can't go out there every day. It's, for an example, I'm working on Harris Casino, and the designer's in Minneapolis. And so he simply can't be there every day, but what he does is come up with a prescriptive number of things to look at and how often, and that's your scope as a special inspector, is to, within that scope, make sure that these structural items are, are, you know, built in accordance with the plans and specs. So that's one thing, that's one thing for thought, is some, a model program like that where you have some sort of, and I'm not sure if there's a certification process now for retaining walls.
Well, there's not. That's one, that's part of what we're proposing here, is we're gonna require certification. We're requiring certification at the end of construction by the engineer. We're not defining the process. Is that fair, Debbie? I mean, that's what we're doing. But we're requiring a certification for walls greater than, again, whether we choose fifteen or twenty feet high per this ordinance. There'd be a certification requirement that there was not in place before.
Right.
City has one, be very similar to that, but it doesn't describe the process. I understand what you're saying, because I do it, but, yeah.
Tommy, let me say, I'm just having recently gone through this, I know that when we were submitting plans for a retaining wall here, that was one of our questions, is who is your third-party inspector?
Really?
Yes. And obviously, we led a contract and bid, and bid that out.
And, and I know, and that's one of the things that says in here, if you have a local, that the problem is, one of the problems is, is that, I'll say problems, is depending on the avenue that you go down, your wall designer could be a whole host of people. Could be a geotechnical engineer, could be a structural engineer, could be the contractor's specialty subcontractor that designs that. But at the end of the day, and that was kind of where I was driving, somebody needs to develop a set of plans and specs with an engineered seal and submit that, and that accounts for both the structural components, the geotechnical components and the civil components of the wall. And a lot of times, it'll be incorporated into site grading. The walls will be shown on there, but somebody has to actually design that wall. And it can come from, it can be the owner's representative. There's a number of ways where you get down through a project to who's designing the wall. But regardless, it need, I mean, my recommendation was that it would be that it needs to be assigned, sealed, submitted plans and specifications. And then you follow, you would follow that up with some sort of QA QC program. It may or may not be the designer, because in the case of some of these MSE walls, it's a product manufacturer that does the design out of Charlotte. So he's not going to be the one coming up here on a routine basis, if at all, to monitor construction.
Jesse, you mentioned that surface and subsurface water was, could be the major reason for the walls failing. Is there any consideration given to earth movement? And that's, that is a concern here in the mountains.
Earthquake or?
No, not earthquake, just this, just the shifting of earth, the very thing that we contend with, with our roads, the heave and thaw and, and the natural movement of, of the base or bed area as you're designing and, and building the wall. Who, who takes that into account?
That is typically exactly what a geotechnical engineer is, is brought on for. And that was one of the, in these slides, I don't want to go into detail, but there, that is specifically addressed in design terminology as global stability. And that can be a major, that can be a major issue for some types of wall systems where they have not incorporated that. And that's one of my, in the back, in my written suggestions, is, is that that absolutely be included in your wall design, is, is exactly what you're talking about, is the global stability.
Stability analysis.
The evaluation of the foundation prior to construction.
You've mentioned so far the need for a geotechnical engineer, a structural engineer. Who would be the other key players, engineers or scientists that would?
Civil is usually involved, you gotta, and.
I'm sorry.
A civil engineer, how you would incorporate that into, typically what happens is that a, a civil engineer develops a site plan. And he'll indicate, because he's not a wall sp, in many cases, they're not wall specialists. So they'll just indicate almost in a, in just a black heavy line where a wall goes. And it'll be up to others, and it usually says something to that effect on a set of plans, wall design to be performed by others. And so it can go in many different directions from there as to who actually does the wall design. Geotechnical firms can do them, some types of walls, structural engineers design some. But whatever the wall type is, eventually it's got, it must get incorporated back into the civil plans. How the drainage goes off of either end of the wall, where the, the tow drains come out, where they fall to. So eventually, it's gotta get incorporated back into a civil. So geotech, structural and civil are the primary engineers that would be involved with the wall design.
Going back to your water, would, would there ever be a need for, say, a hydrogeologist or such, someone like that?
A common practice, that would be in the geotechnical engineer's purview. But certainly, some, there may be some on staff, but that would, dealing with subsurface water would be in the geotech's purview.
Thank you.
I got back to the back where your comments are.
Sure.
I'm following your outline now.
No, that's good.
Which is great, you're doing a great job.
I'm about, I'm about. But again, the intent was some background information as you guys are developing.
Need to go home and study.
Well, that's the second item for discussion that you've got listed here, something that's kind of interesting, came to my attention earlier this morning while I came over here, and that is that there, you go ahead and address it, but there is a North Carolina State Building Code requirement for any retaining walls higher than fifteen feet. It's already in place as well.
It's five feet in IBC.
Well, I'm hung up on fifteen.
And, and along those lines, they're somewhat of an arbitrary value. You know, you may, if you, if fifteen feet is your number, I mean, personally, you could even take that, in order to be, for what is considered a retaining wall to be evaluated by the county, you could probably even take that down a little more. Think about, if you think of it in terms of what would happen, what are the consequences of a wall failure? Or you could add additional criteria, because, you know, a wall of a certain height and a certain proximity to a building or supporting that building. So even a ten-foot wall that was, that is, you know, that is within ten feet, if there's a building on top of that wall within ten feet, well, that's probably something that should fall under Buncombe County regulations as well, almost independent of height. And that's something that I, a good rule of thumb is a dis- a distance of the wall. So if a wall is ten feet tall and the building's within ten feet of the wall, then that should probably also fall under a more stringent evaluation. Because if the wall, you start having problems with the wall, you're starting to impact, you can impact the building.
So what were your thoughts on our discussion we were having about should there be a maximum height or not?
From a engineering perspective. From a engineering perspective, the height, a, a, across-the-board height limitation doesn't really make much sense. I just got done working on a wall out at the casino. It's a, the total grade change was about 110 feet. And it was, there's only one, one bench. So all that is to say is that you can design these with, um, you can design these, certain types of walls to be extremely high. MSE walls, uh, you know, Sea-Tac, I think is the Seattle Airport, it's the tallest one in the country, it's about 140 feet. And it's got inextensible grid, concrete panels, and a runway behind it. So it just depends on the wall type. Now, now ready rock is a gravity, is a concrete gravity structure. And they're only good to about eight feet because it's a gravity-type wall. So it's kind of a difficult question to get at. Depends on the wall type, depends on the circumstance. It just depends on the application. 15 feet is too high for a ready rock system. 15 feet doesn't even touch what you can do with soldier pilon paneling or a properly designed and constructed MSE wall.
So it kind of becomes a business decision by the owner on where his cost-benefit line cuts and how he,
Right.
What kind of wall he wants to do in order to do what he wants to do.
And so.
But it also becomes a safety issue because somebody's going to have to seal that.
That's right.
From a design standpoint, we need to be focused on making sure that we have the proper people designing the entire picture.
That's right. That, that's my perspective.
And the installation.
And during the installation.
That's the QA QC thing he's talking about.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's the critical. So you got before, during, and final certification.
And that almost has to be a geotech.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No structural engineer that I know of would want to do an installation check.
No.
Right.
And a trained in that.
I mean, at the end of the day, you put the, put this in responsible, you know, professional engineers by having a set of plans signed and sealed, plans and specifications submitted, and then some system that ensures that that's been followed up in the field. That may, in the, in the language here, it talks about the designer. It may or may not be the designer. Kind of what we talked about earlier, depending on the situation. Now, I'll tell you, by golly, yeah, the designer should be involved throughout the construction, but that, in the real world, sometimes is not necessarily the case.
I had one, and you, in the aesthetics portion that you've written here, and this was a concern of mine. When you're talking about trees and shrubbery, I, you know, my concern was over time, as those grow through, that they would create wall failures. And, and I mean, I know we have a certain list of approved landscape planning, but, um, you know, I don't know if you could speak more to that because I had always felt like that was a, a long-term concern.
It, it can be, absolutely. I, I think it just, it's fairly common sense. I know, I guess, what they're limiting it to some types of shrubbery in the terraces, but I, I've absolutely, I've seen issues where you have trouble with, um, not only root, uh, root growth that'll expand and actually, you can actually cause damage over time. You, the other thing is if you've got MSE walls, you've got grid running through the walls, and this, this is continually spreading through, and it can be impacting the wall and creating probably more of a maintenance issue, but yeah, and localized spots actually deforming the wall. But the other thing that it can do is create wide moisture variations in the soil behind the wall during wet and dry periods.
It serves to retain the moisture, I guess, with it.
Mm-hmm.
Help retain, you don't want to retain it behind the wall.
Well, it can, you know, in dry periods, it makes it that much drier, so you get a lot more moisture variation with, with shrubbery behind it. And, and, because you'd have to assume that it's not going to get maintained, you know, these things are going to be planted and you're going to walk away from it.
Right.
Then if there's like storms, like I know during the big floods, we've had, I know several cases where some shrubbery, not necessarily tree, was blown over during it, and, um, which actually opened the soil up and water got in and created failure.
Right.
Just for that specific one event.
Right. And, and along those lines, there's other avenues, there's a lot of ways to address that issue in terms of aesthetics. That is certainly one of them. You know, a landscape architect could probably speak a little better to this, but there's all kinds of ways to finish walls. If, and I don't know if the intent is, certainly with a single span or a single height, you are looking at something that's rather, it's big. I mean, I think, I don't know if that's the intent, is with a terrace, you get more of a broken look. But there are other things you can do to finish it. It, it doesn't have to be bare concrete. You can stamp it. You can, uh, there's specialty subcontractors that can shockcrete all types of looks on the front of the wall. Like with reinforced soil slopes, they actually, uh, they can seed it where if it's laid back enough and it'll grow, actually green up, be sort of like a green wall. So there's other, I guess the whole point being is that there's a lot of other, there are other avenues to aesthetically treat a wall system.
If you go out to Weaverville at Northridge Commons, I think that's the name of it, the Walmart Lowe's Center out there. We did that, and there's some reinforced slope walls that he's referring to that have been planted. I hadn't been out there in a long time. But I assume the growth has taken over the ivy and so forth and so on down where it's, you know, aesthetically pleasing. Did you want to say something, John?
I guess there, there is some, I guess, a conflict there. When we talked to Bernie on several occasions, he didn't have a problem with landscape. And I guess, obviously, this ordinance is, is driven a lot by aesthetics. I mean, have you seen the wall on 74?
Yes, I've seen it. I'm not.
So if, if that was shockcrete or had a stamp in it, would it look any better to you?
Well, that certainly, um, just from a personal perspective, uh, I've never seen a wall that looked like that anywhere else.
But I mean, would it look any better that, that it'd be in a system wall if it was, if it was stamped with something? I mean, that's, that's the driving force here, is the commissioners don't want to see segmented wall that sits on top of each other that are each 40 feet high.
Right.
I mean, then, that's, that's the whole driving issue. I understand from an engineering standpoint, you can build whatever it takes, a 50-foot or 100-foot wall. The problem is that as a board of commissioners, they really don't want to see another one here.
Right. Well, and again, um, therein, I'm speaking from a, exactly from a technical perspective.
I understand. But you know, you need to put on the, I guess, the impact that that wall has had, at least on that part of Buncombe County, the people that drive past it every day.
Sure.
And say, what can we do in the future not to let this kind of occurrence happen? I think that's where we came from. And I guess the, to address another point, you said that when we put this together, we didn't just necessarily look at the, the type of wall that you mentioned, the MS, MS, uh,
MSE.
Type wall. Now, obviously Chairman started out by saying, well, you know, gave you an dispelled this way. So, you know, it'd been nice if you'd have sat down and kind of talked with us first to say, okay, what did you have in mind?
Okay. Yeah, well, just to give you a background, Josh had asked me, I, I was not aware, the only thing I had done is review the ordinance. So I apologize, my, my, um,
You don't need to.
Proceeds.
No, you, you did exactly what we asked you to do.
Yeah, you're doing.
You, you did exactly what we asked you to do. We wanted the technical aspects of this.
Yeah.
These other issues are political.
Yeah.
So we didn't ask you to come and make political statements. We asked you to come and tell us the technical.
So I, I'm not involved with that particular project. I, um, I can certainly understand where there's grief coming from, from multiple parties on that project. My complete outside look at that was that there's probably, as I was mentioning earlier, there's probably a number of issues that got that going in the direction that it is. If you look at it, just the site grading and the site plan looks odd. It does, the, the wall, the, the layout, the site, nothing looks normal, like a normal project in that wall. It's definitely out of the norm. It's, it is not a typical, I think anybody can tell you it's not a typical wall.
Yeah.
Or typical thought.
And my only, I'm, I'm supposed to say, the only reason to bring up aesthetics at all, because I do think that's right. I'm technically asking you because technically, if these are, if, if anything that we put in as an aesthetic, that would not be something you would be commenting on, would cause a failure technically, I'm just trying to look for information like that.
Right. And it can cause problems.
That specific problem was one that I had seen and heard about had happened prior in this county. And felt like it was something to bring forward on a technical basis.
Right. And so, um, it, they can cause problems if they're not, um, if it's not properly accounted for. You can absolutely landscape around walls. That's not, that was not my intent, is it? Yes, you can absolutely landscape with the, with the right materials. And a landscape architect can tell you a lot about the specific types of things that will grow. And you can absolutely landscape, but that, that was not my intent. But if you're, if you're not careful, they can cause. And I've seen, yeah, in my experience where it's caused problems in the past.
Okay. Uh, terracing. Width of terracing, which is proposed to be 10 feet right now. Incidentally, I looked this morning before I came over here, the city's ordinance is five feet rather than 10, and we're back to eating up land, viable land and all this, and the other. What's the thinking there?
I'm pretty sure Bernie said that, that you needed 10 feet as a minimum when we were talking.
We won't pick on Bernie today.
He did say that. I, I remember that as well.
Yeah.
From the aesthetics part, I mean, it's, it's no different than corridor width. When you, when you sit there and you say, okay, at some point, this thing gets so tall and I keep stepping it back, I've got to do something different. Now, you know, if, if they've sent their gradient to a one and a one and a half percent slope, you're going to eat up a lot more land. But when you get on up, do you, okay, I, I go up 20 feet, I go back 10, I go up another 15 feet, I go back 10. And do I start thinking of about a better way to do it? You know, than, than to build a monster wall?
If you look on the last, uh, that last page, I kind of, just as a schematic of exactly that scenario. Because that, there's the aesthetics, that is exactly why you're going to have this one continuous rise. Technically, you can design a wall to do that. What that looks like, that can be an issue. You've got this monotone gray, like the Staples building down here. You've got this gigantic block. It, that can be a, and I, it can be an eyesore. But the other issue is that by requiring terraces, what's driving this right now is, I guess, is not a technical issue in terms of terracing. It's, we're talking about from an aesthetics perspective. And this is the kind of impact, and this is back when it was 15 feet, so this little schematic. But just kind of gives you an idea, say, from the edge, what a developer or an owner is looking at. So you've got a right away, it's on the bottom right, bottom left-hand part of the page. And this is a pretty tall wall, but you've got an eight-foot setback right now by your, for your plantings, up 15, back 10. And then most of these MSE walls, they have grid that runs the length behind the wall. So you can't put building foundations on top of that grid that, that's, uh, the, the building has to be beyond that. So all that is to say, you're going to have about, you'd need about, you know, for, if you're trying to make a grade change of 45 feet, you're going to need 40 or 45 feet laterally also. So you're almost to the point where you could replace that wall with a reinforced one-to-one fill embankment.
Which gets back to what John's saying.
Right.
It's an alternative that the developer would have to consider. Yeah. There. They come in here to remove us?
Yeah.
To tell us time's up?
Well, when this wall thing in Fairview, when, when the wall thing in Fairview cropped up, was it the aesthetics that hit first? And did the commissioners hear about the aesthetics first, and then we found out about the safety?
Well, they got back to it.
Yeah. In that.
Yeah.
I have to admit, the first time I saw it, I was quite taken.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's objective here, is, is, obviously, uh, we sat down and talked to the structural part of the people. We, we've had a landscape engineer or landscape architect involved. But nobody wants to see another 80-foot wall that, you know, is right beside the road.
John, what was the approval process on that?
That was, I guess, that was back when we didn't have, we didn't have zoning. And it basically came through building permits. That was between the two zoning periods? Yes, sir.
Yes. Yes.
Would it, would it be different now?
You know, we want to make the changes where we get that elevation drawings to y'all in, in part of the approval process so that, or, or the Board of Adjustments, so that they can say, at least take a look at it and.
I mean, would, would the process be any different now? If, if they were, if that project were being proposed now, would that, would that, wouldn't that hat, wall have to have gone through some sort of oversight or what?
It, it would require a planning unit development permit, so it would be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. And as John said, one of the changes we're proposing is that the plans that are submitted actually not just show that there's a wall here, but they identify the height of that wall and also give some, some, um, plan view or, um, side view perspective, so you can see what it's really going to look like.
I think, you know, in cases in the past, I mean, the planning board, there's been some projects come through, and I know Scott was here, where, you know, the, the planning board just said, no, you're just, you're making a mess of the property. You need to go back and find some other way. And that's why either, you know.
The problem is, is though you've got to have the information in order to make those decisions. And the fact is, is the more information we can get in front of the boards making those decisions, I think the better off we are. I mean, a standard, you know, the question, you know, that you ask of this guy, you know, I think is, is somewhat unfair because we have to have a standard of what would, would have been acceptable wall height for that project in Fairview. And we can't decide that. So, I mean, to me, that's the first step. At what point does it trigger the type of oversight that, 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 that we need, particularly from a safety and soundness standpoint? And then aesthetically, the same question. At what point does it need to come before this? I mean, I personally think a 15, 20-foot wall at that point needs, needs oversight. It needs someone looking at it. It needs, it needs that safety aspect of it, if not the aesthetic aspect of it.
And, you know, I guess we went, if you look at the wall that's behind City Hall, if you make the corner of Davidson and Marjorie Street, that's a 23-foot wall right there. The wall's pretty tall. And I think that, you know, as has been discussed today, it's not a bad idea to make sure that we have inspections. I mean, you know, in roads, we have a geotechnical engineer involved. So obviously, the more eyes that you can have on, on this kind of stuff is really good. We've been very fortunate in this county that we haven't had a lot of wall failures or anything like that. And I can only think of a couple, including the problems at the one on, on 74, but that's not to say that it won't happen tomorrow.
Jesse, let me ask a couple of things and just bear with me a minute. I've got a, while I understand this tiering is some for aesthetics, but I'm also got the question of every time you tier that wall, you're exposing 10 feet of earth to moisture. Do you come in, do you get into issues where hydrostatic pressure becomes, because every time you tier that wall, you're adding more moisture to the soil as opposed, you know, you've got, you've got more surface area contributing.
Right.
Is there a point that that is damage? And then the other thing that Bernie asked about the other day is, when you bring the weight of this new wall 10 feet back, do you create a point load that at some point transfers horizontally?
What, what happens is, is that you, you will end up probably with a tiered system, you'll end up with more geogrid and more select material than you would. It's, it's, that's probably, you can design it to accommodate. If you, if the tiered wall is what you want, you can design it to, to perform correctly.
Right.
What it means is that a terrace system will probably, you know, you gotta, you have, you have to go through the evaluation of each one, but, but more than likely, it means probably a higher, to terrace it is a higher cost if you throw out just the, the usable land that you lose, just solely looking at the, the cost of the wall.
If you throw out just the, the usable land that you lose, just solely looking at the, the cost of the wall. It'll probably increase the cost of the wall because it'll increase your grid lengths, and we're talking in terms of MSE wall. Increase your grid lengths and probably increase your select fill volumes.
I guess, long story short, and I understand aesthetics is important, and I'm going to address what I think about that in a minute. But on any given day, do you feel better signing off on a 40-foot wall that's, that's been designed properly? Or a 40-foot wall with two tiers in it?
Both can be made to perform satisfactorily. You can design both to work and work correctly. I mean, it's.
So you don't think there's, there's no difference in your mind?
From a functionality perspective, now, it may make sense for a specific condition to do one versus the other.
Okay.
But if the slate is clean and all things being equal, you can design both to perform.
Okay, then I think what he's saying is important, but also, you, what I'm hearing here, and like I said, just having gone through this, some of what we're doing is trying to balance between the safety and the aesthetics. And I'm, in, in my mind, I haven't heard anything yet asked that was not previously addressed when I was trying to get a retaining wall permit. I mean, are, are we on the safety end of this? Are we duplicating what building safety is already doing? And if so, we don't need to be second guessing the people that do this for a living. Now, the aesthetics, then maybe we need to address. But I'm not, I'm not sure that, we don't need to leave the safety issue to the building safety people. And it sounds like that's regulated. Am I right?
In the county, what, now, now what do you, who, regulated by?
State of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina, IBC says that they classify anything over five feet as a retaining wall. That's what the state, that's what the IBC six.
But as far as QA QC?
Now, that is where the disconnect is.
Exactly.
Don't believe, there is a statement, there's a special inspections provisions provided in the IBC. But that is for structures, buildings, that there's nothing in there that's going to link a retaining, that's right, there's no.
So I mean, we've got, we've got regulation, but no oversight.
You have, what I think it says is that anything over five feet has to be designed by a registered professional, I think is.
Doesn't say it has to be certified upon completion.
It doesn't say it has to be certified.
It will.
Nothing in the retaining wall section about the QA QC. That, that was my original comment, was that you create that link, a, a sister program or a similar program to what we have for special inspections. Where there's somebody tasked with following that through, whether it be the designer or whether it be the.
Well, if that's the case, do we not need to get somebody from building safety in here to, I mean, these things, e- even if we're duplicating, we need to make sure they go hand in hand, which I'm, I'm actually opposed to duplicating. If somebody's doing the job, we don't need to do it again. And then if we're going to deal with, with an aesthetics ordinance, then let's do that.
Good idea.
Well, the, there is, under D, those items one through four. That is the same as building permits requires. But then going on to require the certification at the end. And then the whole section on the long-term monitoring, where we require a baseline survey. That is all additional requirements from what.
That's all new.
Code would require.
Well, that's something that's not currently done.
That's correct.
Correct.
Jesse, back on Greg's concern about the impact of water buildup. Not unlike what you do for buildings on steep slopes on the uphill side. Can you not put drainage systems, subsurface drain systems in there? Or is that not a part of a typical retaining wall?
No, it absolutely is. That, when I said select fill, part of that select fill is usually a clean crushed stone, like a 57 stone, wrapped in a fabric. You take it slotted PVC. Typically, how it's done is there's a, there's a drainage tile, maybe a foot wide or so, that follows up the face of the wall. MSE walls, the more gravel you have, the shorter your grids can be. So in some cases, they go all select, like a clean stone, so there never can be any hydrostatic pressure behind the wall.
So would that, would that mitigate his concerns in to some extent?
I guess that's what I was saying. You can design it, you can, you can, you can spec that out in your design so that it's not an issue. And, and you probably, and you would, you would have drainage tiles behind each wall and some sort of collection system to get the water out through the face.
Okay. Let's try to rein this thing in a little bit. It's hours getting late. We hadn't even talked about aesthetics yet. Back on the safety issues and so forth, does anybody have an opinion with regard to what the, when this regulation ought to kick in? 15, 20 feet, five feet?
I'm comfortable with the 20-foot. I think that's.
Well, now the 20, the 20 feet, okay, we're at 20 feet now across the board. Okay.
It's personal opinion.
That's what's proposed.
It's personal opinion.
Anyhow. Okay, all right. I like Jesse's idea regarding closing the disconnect between design, construction, and certification. By maybe, we can get with Bernie on this, creating some type of QA QC language in there. It probably wouldn't be but a sentence or two or something like that. I think that gives us, well, again, a stricter, stricter standard probably than the building code is. I doubt whether that's included in there specifically. Don't know, hadn't read it. But I think it's critical. I agree with him. My, my experience in wall failures has been basically due to disconnect. So we might want to look into that. Let's talk about aesthetics. Talking about the disconnect starting at 20 feet? Well, regardless of what number we choose, whether this ordinance kicks in at five, 10, 15, or 20 feet. And I think we're talking collectively here now, maybe 20 feet's the number. And disregarding anything to do with terracing. What he was saying is, you know, the disconnect between, once it's designed and the monitoring aspect in the field during construction. So that we can arrive at a certification that's good certification.
But in the middle is a third-party person.
Yeah, and, and that, what he's talking about, and I'm seeing this more and more in, in some construction documents we get to bid on occasionally, is there is a requirement in there to provide quality assurance and quality control. You know, typically called QA QC as part of that specification. Maybe we need to create some language similarly to go with our proposed ordinance. In this, back where the certification language is.
And Tommy, I'm, I'm going to ask again, like I said, not to belabor the point, but is that, is that not something that maybe could be better done through the county working with building safety? I mean, ultimately, they're going to, while, while we may have to sign off on it, they are going to issue the permit.
Building permits can only require what building code requires. So it would be difficult for them to, to add more stringent requirements.
Okay, I always understood that the, I mean, anything I've ever been told by the inspector was that the local inspector had the final say. Whether it was over and above, you know, what codes were or not. Is that they always had, they always had the final say? Okay.
Okay. On aesthetics, on page two, and just cleaning something up. Subparagraph B entitled landscaping. Subparagraph I or one, it says the wall or wall systems exceeds 20. The wall or wall system exceeds 20 feet in height and the base of the wall system is closer than 100 feet to the edge of the public or private street. Is that edge a right-of-way or edge of pavement? Just cleaning it up.
That's to the edge of the street.
Edge, edge of pavement.
Edge of pavement.
Okay.
While you're there, and I realize we're going to evolve further, but to me, there's a conflict between the statement there where it says the wall or wall systems exceed 20 feet in height. When in fact, in paragraph A, it currently says they can't exceed 20 feet, a single wall.
Well, this is landscaping.
No, I, I understand that. But, but under landscaping, it implies that a single wall can exceed 20 feet. And up above, we just said it can't.
So it's just to say wall system only?
You got to read the first sentence in advance of it, I think, to make it flow. Foreground landscaping and attached vegetative screening should be required for retaining walls, retaining wall systems if one. The wall system, the wall system exceeds 20 feet in height.
It says the wall or wall system.
Well, that's the definition.
That's the definition, yeah.
Okay.
The only other thing, aesthetically, and I'll let everybody else have the floor, but one thing. And I'm not sure how to do it, that we're not taking into account here. And I mentioned this before, I think at our last meeting, was for those developers that choose to spend a little more money and construct a wall using, if it's an SME wall, segmental block wall, it's known as cultured stone. In other words, a good, a good example is the Weir Bridge project I mentioned before out in South Asheville. That costs a little more money to buy that type of block, and it's got a real nice appearance to it, a more native type of appearance. The way we've got this ordinance proposed, we're going to cover that, we would cover that wall up with landscaping. So we're not giving the developer an opportunity to choose another alternative other than just landscaping. You see what I'm saying? Which means the cheaper block, I guess it's the cheaper block, is the block that we're seeing out there in Fairview. But some of the block you see, and I keep picking on Weir Bridge because it's so visible, is what is known as a cultured stone, I think, and that may be a trade name of one of the manufacturers. But it gives a true rock appearance in this type of thing. I know we're working on a job now with the National Park Service in Eastern Tennessee. And we're going to extremes, and it's a segmental block wall, to replicate the hand-laid rock pattern, et cetera, and color that's up on the parkway. And, I mean, it's, it's a challenge, but, but it can be done. I mean, it's expensive. Typically, a developer wouldn't choose to do that, I don't think. But you can do a little bit of anything you want to, appearance-wise. And I don't know whether we need to try to build something in to provide those developers with a little bit of relief that choose to go that route, I guess. Relief landscaping-wise, because you'd certainly want the block to be exposed if it's got a native rock appearance. Anybody else have anything on aesthetics?
Well, it's just not clear in my mind that, that we know whether we should have vegetation or not. And, and to that extent, if you look at the table on planting requirements, for walls 15 to 30 feet, it says one small deciduous tree. And then for walls greater than 30 feet, one large deciduous tree. And so I would ask, well, what, what defines small and large? But apart from that, should you be, should you be planting trees, getting back to our pre, previous discussion?
Well, the trees are only allowed in the foreground at the base of the, of the wall. They're not allowed on the terraces.
Yes, that's right, yeah. I can imagine some attached vegetation could damage the wall.
Yep, I can too.
And that's why we have the, the planting requirements that have been gone over by a landscape architect to make sure they're, they're the type of vegetation and size that would be appropriate.
I got a question regarding the, and I guess we're really referring to Ivy here. You know, getting 50% growth or coverage over the, over the wall, over what period of time? And that's on the table on page three. It starts down the lower right-hand corner. And what?
Well, you'd have to plant it per the specifications. So it'd be two-gallon size vines planted three feet on center.
Well, I guess you're okay now that I read it. The way it's worded, attached vegetative screening supports covering 50%. It doesn't really mean at the time you complete the wall, you've got to have 50% coverage. It supports that growth.
Right.
Okay, I, I'm okay with that, yeah.
I would add that word. I would add supports growth.
Oh, and supports growth covering, okay. You see what Joe's saying?
Just what you said.
Yeah, but, but they're called supports.
Back on that edge of pavement or right-of-way comment I made. Could we put in parentheses, street, after the word private street or after street, maybe parentheses pavement, edge of pavement or something like that, just to kind of clarify it? Okay, what's your pleasure? We need to move this along to the county commissioners as quickly as possible. I think we.
I'd like to see the changes made.
Yeah, I think we need to have another.
Have one more session on it and then present it for public comment.
And, and for existing walls, we're saying they're all grandfathered and, you know, they either survive or they don't.
Not much we do about existing.
There's no inspection or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you would retool a little bit. And I will get with Bernie. And maybe the three of us could sit down again and try to strike some language regarding to QA and QC.
I mean, one thing that John's point's well taken. I mean, the fact is, is are we saying that there is a limit on height of a wall? I mean, what, are we saying 40 feet is as high as it can go?
Well, no, we haven't put any limit on, on the height.
Then should we? Because the fact of the matter is, is if we make these changes, could this not have been replicated out there in Fairview? Maybe it might be a little more pleasing, but it still would have been built. So the question is, is are, are the commissioners wanting to limit the height of retaining walls? Or are they, you know, is, is this just basically putting a, a Band-Aid on, on an artery?
Well, I, I think if you had an ultimate strict height limit, you could run into some, some design issues that we don't really want to interfere with. But we do want to, to first off, make it a little easier to look at with the terraces and the landscaping. And at some point, if, if the proposed wall height would be so much that they've eaten up too much land, maybe that's not the appropriate site for that particular project. Or maybe they can look at it in a different way and redesign.
Yeah, that'll drive, that'll be an economic question.
And then I guess that's what I've done with the terracing, is to make you think, and obviously, I'm no engineer, but I think there were other ways that they could have done that whole project that sits on 74 without building this wall. That's the bottom line. So, you know, it gives an opportunity to say, okay, I'm chewing up a lot of land. Let me go back and look and see if there's a way to not build this 60 or 80-foot wall. That's the bottom line, I think, as far as the planning staff was looking at.
And it's like we talked, I think, last meeting. I mean, you could have a, you may have a 60-foot, 60-foot wall and a fill section that's hidden basically from view, that wouldn't be objectionable to anybody.
And that's what variances are for.
Yeah.
Well, the wall behind Sam's.
Yeah. Well, I'm going, Ingles long shows. Nobody sees it, you know, that type of thing. Anyway.
That's important to say, there is a variant, there could be a variance.
Yeah.
If you had a specific issue.
Let's work on the language a little. I'll get up with Bernie and see if the three of us can't get together again too retool some things based on comments today and add some language and try to bring this back. We will bring it back for our next meeting in two weeks with the goal to. We will bring it back for our next meeting in two weeks, with the goal to poll the board and see if we're ready to move forward with public notice regarding this language. Is that fair enough?
Maybe Jesse could review what we...
Yeah, yeah, I certainly...
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, I'll call you, and I appreciate you coming today.
Sure.
Appreciate it, Jesse.
Thank you.
Love the handout, and I think this handout is others that aren't as familiar as maybe Rod and I and Bernie are with walls. Give you a chance to chew on it a little bit and think through the process, and if you've got any more ideas...
Who's asking me?
My previous employer. Couldn't find another engineering pad at home.
But we appreciate your time.
Sure.
Appreciate your comments, and you did a great job with this presentation. It's very helpful.
Thanks.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is public comment. Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning, Al Gumpert. I just have one comment, and that is, I appreciate what you're doing, but I also hear what John's saying. Isn't the place to catch this at the point at which somebody looks at the plat and the grading plan? If a guy's going to change the grade on a piece of property by 40 feet, 10 feet from the road, you should be able to stop it right there. It's not going to be aesthetically pleasing, no matter what he does. You know, it's like, you see some commercial properties where they carve out into the, into the grade to put a retail place, and they spray the back wall with concrete. It's never going to look pretty, and it shows. So, I don't know how, from a permit, so forth, standpoint, this could be brought to your attention, but it seems to me it's, the first place to catch this is in the, in the plan for grading. And you all certainly talked that issue with various people who had wanted rezoning out on 74, but I don't know what, what power you could have to, to regulate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gumpert. Anyone else?
I just have a few comments. One is...
DeeDee Stiles.
Yeah, right, DeeDee Stiles. One of the most attractive retaining walls in our county I'd like to remind you about is the wall at the entrance to the arboretum, which is a boulder wall. And so, you know, I think to cover up something like that, I mean, you don't need to cover that up with vegetation, or if there's some way to encourage more walls to be made like that, rather than the cast stones. I mean, that boulder wall's a dry stack, as far as I know. I do know that the state has some fairly severe regulations about dry stack walls, because my brother makes a number of them, and has recently, apparently, they made all kind of rules about, you can't make them more than three feet high, or five feet, or whatever it is. But it might be useful to look into what kind of regulations the state has. And if the state is going to start their regulation of the, and control of walls at five feet, maybe, I mean, might make sense for the county to match that. I mean, or you've got people having to look at, somebody comes in to build a wall, and he's got these regulations from the state, and these regulations from the building inspector, and these regulations from the, and all that kind of stuff going on. And so, and that just makes more confusion. The other thing is, when you're talking about below-grade walls, where it doesn't show, it doesn't show today. Maybe it's not going to show for 10 years, but the way the county's developing, 15 years from now, somebody's house might be right below that. And so, I think, on the long term, it doesn't matter whether the wall shows, is going to show next week, but, but it, all the walls should meet the same standards, I think, for safety and for aesthetics, because you don't know down the road whether it's going to show or not.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay. I haven't heard, no further comment. I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second. Who made the motion?
You did.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll motion, I'll make a motion adjourn. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.